Hello and welcome to the FMCC's World FM Day Celebration. Our presentation right today is going to be FM Service Management: Technology Essentials for Each Generation. And our presenters today are Jeff Williams, Ted Ritter, and Laura Spatack. I do want to let everyone know they have been muted for audio quality. And that this webinar is being recorded and a copy will be provided at a later date. And it will be posted to the FMCC website, which is fmc.c.org. If you do have any questions during this webinar, please feel free and type them into the question box and we'll review them during the Q&amp;A portion at the end of the webinar. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ted, Jeff, and Laura. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Josh, and thanks for joining us today. Happy World FM Day. We're at 10:00 AM Central Time on May 16th. We're basically repurposing some content we shared at Facility Fusion in Chicago. I think we had a very interactive two-hour session that could have gone quite a bit longer. Between the three of us was a great audience and we'll hopefully be able to replicate some of those dynamics, even though we'll have less interaction with those of you that are online with us today. So I always like to spend a moment talking about the importance of councils and communities. You know, we're organized into 16 verticals that are typically around a specific sector of marketplace, airports, or bank, or corporate, or utilities. And that gives you an opportunity to network with like peers across many geographies. Communities are really more horizontally organized and provide content and thought leadership that really support our core competencies. Jeff and I have been with the technology community for more years than we'd like to really admit to, and very happy to have Laura with us today as well. I think our primary mission is that we want to collaborate and answer the same question multiple different ways, which is, you know, how does technology support infrastructure and facility management in general? And we collaborate with other communities, chapters, and really look for best practice case studies to share. We present quite a few events around the world, as well as producing six to eight webinars a year. Just to look back to last year, I think Jeff's going to point out that I probably missed a couple, but we were represented at most of the major IFMA events, as well as quite a few regional events in North America. So we're very active and I think very collaborative in terms of how we approach things. One of the things that we did put together with our partners, with IFMA, the German Facility Management Association, is the Facility Managers' Guide to Information Technology. We started this process, I think, almost 12, 14 years ago. We remastered into the second edition last year. We launched that, I think, at World Workplace in Houston. We had a nice book signing. It's a great reference tool and really designed to be kind of a good resource guide for working facility managers, as well as a good resource for universities with FM programs. So thanks again for attending the webinar. You can find a copy of the book on Amazon if you're interested. Last minute slide. Here's, I think, in terms of some really good information on ISO. If you'd like to learn more, there's, you know, you can certainly get in touch with Laverne, or you can go to the iso.org home. I think it's really important to make sure that we understand that there are now global standards that, quite frankly, didn't exist a few years ago. Outline for today. Jeff's going to talk about our format a little bit. We're going to talk about types of stakeholder-facing FM technologies. We really have to have some consideration and thought process on device formats. Going to talk a little bit about hospitality and how the philosophy of hospitality is migrating into the facility management world and how we operate our facilities and how we interact with our customers. We're going to talk a little bit about challenges. A good part of that, I think, will be, you know, between the three of us, but I think we'll call some things that we've heard from Fusion in Chicago. We'll talk briefly about how to develop a flexible FM strategy and how do we really deal with process mapping to different technology platforms. Really, kind of a lot of change management involved. It's just a kind of fact of life that the technology is changing so rapidly. Then we'll wrap up with addressing privacy concerns, GDPR, general protection requirements that goes into effect on May 25th in Europe. And that's already affecting how we really need to think about how we interact with our customers online, even in TUS. And those same requirements are definitely going to be coming here next year, so something we all need to keep an eye out for. Quick background of myself. As I said, I've been with the technology community for quite some time, past further the Phoenix chapter, serve on the Americas Advisory Board, and am co-author of Facility Managers' Guide to Information Technology. Jeff, I think I'll hand it off to you and Laura to talk a little bit more.
Hey. Well, I've also been involved in the information technology community since probably the beginning of time. It feels like I was 12 when I joined. And I've held every role, including the coveted chair role that Ted has graciously ascended to at this point. I've been actively involved in IFMA, chapter leader, and also global board director for three years. So really passionate about the facility management community and looking forward to the chat today. Laura?
Hi, everyone. It's nice to be with you on World FM Day. I am a facility manager in Cleveland, Ohio for a nonprofit. I've been involved with IFMA for several years now, and I work closely with the Northern Ohio Chapter.
Excellent. Can we get the next slide, please? All right. So today, it's going to be a little different than the last time we presented it, but the idea was that we would seed the audience with a series of content pieces that Ted kind of went through in the outline. And the expectation was is that we'd be happy to have audience interaction, so in this case, through the chat window, happy to be derailed and talk about the things that you wish to talk about. But to get started, we're going to get into a little bit about who we are from a generational perspective and the technology that we grew up with. This is a bit of a kind of a learning experience about who Ted is, who Jeff is, and who Laura is from a technology perspective. Next slide, please.
So, yeah, I'm the boomer in the group. And I think when we came up with this concept and Jeff, you know, it was a great idea, is, you know, where did we start with technology? What did we grow up with? And what did the first technology look like that we used in the workplace? So, you know, I grew up with a black and white TV. I grew up with, you know, records, 45s and 33 and a third long play. I'm kind of very fortunate that, you know, I had a reel-to-reel tape recorder when I was young, and I was actually able to make playlists in the late 60s, which was really cool and cutting-edge. As far as, you know, my first phone was a brick. It was expensive as all get out, but I was kind of in the construction space for a couple of years, and it really made a difference in terms of how to communicate from the field to suppliers or back to the shop. But, you know, it was my first phone. It's as close as we could find to a first computer. It was really, really cool. It had a hard drive. It had a whole 10 meg of storage on it, which I think compared to, you know, what we consider today as a reasonable download for a large image file, is the entire storage capacity of the PC. So, you know, that's where I started. I think, you know, we had a lot of interaction from discussion and fusion of, you know, how many boomers were in the room and how many Gen X and Gen Y. It caused, I think, a lot of good conversation. Before I move on to, you know, the Jeff slide, any comments from Jeff or Laura on kind of replaying in their mind what happened in Chicago?
Well, I think one of the things that I'll replay is I'm still trying to imagine you giving your first girlfriend a mixtape in something the size of a pizza box, but I'm sure it was very amorous.
I can't say I actually gave a mixtape out to anyone because the tapes were so damned expensive that I had one. So, anyway, that didn't actually happen. So a little segue into your first technology experience with Mr. Williams.
Yeah. So I think that the one thing that we should probably highlight is that Ted and I are probably fairly early adopters of technology. And I think that that's one of the things that kind of starts to dispel the generational items. You'll see some of the similar elements in Laura's items to things that I had in high school. But, you know, I remember the first phone, that cellphone that came into our family, and it was this thing that basically was trunk-mounted. It took up half the trunk and you got a full-on handset in the car. First computer was the Vic 20, which was, well, it was terrible. You recorded your programs on a cassette tape and they would notoriously crash. And that's if the cassette tape didn't break or get screwed up. My first stereo, 1985 Sony, it had AM stereo, which was unheard of to that point. And then I got the Walkman, which had mega bass so that you could really, really hammer out that bass through your ears. We were talking about it earlier, or yesterday. I didn't realize this until this past weekend, but that computer is exactly the computer that I had. It had an external CD-ROM drive. And I found out that it was $7,000 in 1995. It was great. It was a 486 with a math coprocessor, and I could do AutoCAD on it. And around the same time, I got my first cellphone. So I think I've been probably, for my cohort, I was adopting technology a little bit faster than others in my cohort. Any comments from Laura or Ted?
So, explain the whole Walkman FNA in the bottom right. I mean, what's going on with that? Did you really walk around with that? You know, did you have a backpack? Or, I mean, how did that work?
Yeah, no, I attached it to my belt. I was the coolest guy in town, Ted. It also had AM stereo and fancy things like auto-reverse and preset tuning. It was extremely high-end. And I bought it at a, it was almost a precursor to an Amazon, where you'd go in and you'd fill out a piece of paper and they'd go into the warehouse and then they'd bring it back for you.
Interesting. Move on to Gen Y and Laura.
Yes. So following Gen X and the Walkman came us millennials and the Discman, the digital generation. We grew up listening to CDs and MP3s. The World Wide Web entered mainstream America in our early childhood years. We enjoyed Disney and Nickelodeon. We had our first Nokia cellphones in high school, and most of us can remember MySpace. Then came the iPod and the iPhone. We've learned to embrace technology with hands-on curiosity. We've always been encouraged to jump right in and discover. We look forward to the newest devices and latest products. That being said, we'll soon be the old kids on the block. Gen Z is making their way to the world of FM, and it's likely that we'll look to our young colleagues to help us innovate and improve.
So when you got a page, what would you do?
Ah, we would find our way to this really archaic machine called a T-phone. And then we would call collect.
Of course, yes. You want to make sure you put that burden onto your friends and family. Yeah, so I think I had every one of those items. I had a Discman that actually did more than my rack-mounted CD player. It had, I could make playlists on the Discman itself. And it had something that looked like a calculator on the top, which was pretty fancy for its day.
Sounds like, sounds like. You know, I think we've all got different perspectives. I think, you know, I think Laura, well put, you, from a generational perspective, you know, adopting acquisitive and good point. We've got, you know, even more fully integrated to the web and tech as just, you know, standard coming into the workplace now. So Jeff, if you want to take kind of point on, you know, the initial part for stakeholder-facing technologies?
Yeah. So I think that the reality is that technology is invasive in FM, and there's really no way to get around it. But we've got all of these different things facing our stakeholders and recognizing that we've got stakeholders that are coming from different generations, and their comfort levels are going to be different. So the media and method of delivery could be different. Imagine your maintenance management, your IWMS. Not only do you have different stakeholder roles in what you're asking them to do inside of that, but you're also asking them to ingest information in different ways and understanding that in some cases, those are going to be barriers to adoption and understanding those different elements. One of the things that we found very interesting in a business that I was working in is that the catering element and the room reservation were tied together and really streamlining that to make a cohesive, customer-facing toolset that allowed you to really be predictive and customer relationship management and all those things. It took a lot of effort to find a tool that could be almost uniformly rolled out to multi-generation. There was a huge group of people that you had to work to figure out how to get them to stop phoning because it was actually easier to use the tech. Didn't want to bar them from phoning to phone in their order, but wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity that matched their interests or acceptance. Get into some of the other things. We're talking about artificial intelligence and analytics and IoT being really pervasive. And if you think that there isn't IoT in your business, I think that's probably, in most cases, erroneous because people are bringing IoT devices to work with them. And so you look at Google Maps and how it does traffic. They are tracking phones and understanding where things are and how fast things are moving. So there are IoT devices everywhere. They're not necessarily being used for facility management, but they're coming into your business. Artificial intelligence is something that's really, really going to change the shape of the businesses that we function in because there are tasks that will become obsolete inside organizations because a computer can do them just as well as a person can. If you go on online and read some of the Associated Press articles, what you'll find is that a lot of times they're being computer-generated as composites of other articles or news feeds. Ted or Laura, would you have anything to add to that? Wonderful.
Sure, sure. I absolutely will. You know, the integration of AI and analytics is, you know, where we're seeing some incredible advances, especially in the last two years. We look at what IBM's done with Watson and how they've managed to provide a master toolset into any other tech environment with not just, you know, off-the-shelf great analytical capabilities and great graphing, but with the AI behind it to, once it starts learning what you're actually asking for, it'll start saying, "Had you thought about this? Maybe you should look at it like that." Is, you know, I think really, you know, something we should, as from an industry perspective, not be shy about taking advantage of. Besides Watson, there's, you know, another group of excellent tools out there, but I've been made a very conscious decision, for example, to make it incredibly affordable. So, you know, no matter what your challenges are, you know, whether it's how to, you know, look at optimizing, you know, the staff time or vendor time that you have, to actually, you know, take care of your preventative maintenance, or look at more, you were talking about Jeff, in terms of customer-facing, really more of a shared service, complete, one-stop-shop, go to the portal, request space, request catering, you know, put in a too hot, too cold call. You know, it's, you know, I think integrating all into that one customer-facing portal and having sort of work centers that, you know, make sense for the different stakeholders. I think it's the other, you know, kind of tailoring that we're seeing a lot of the, you know, tech, you know, focusing on that from a developer perspective. So if you're a financial analyst, or you're a scheduler, or you're a, you know, field tech, then you've got, you know, really a view into that same dataset, but in context that makes it more relevant to you. What do you think about that, Jeff and Laura?
I think it's actually a good segue to the next slide, actually. So if we were to look at the next slide, I think that there's, so the context becomes different things, and different things mean different things to different people. And so I think, you know, we've come from a world, or at least I came from a world that, you know, the desktop and laptop were kind of ubiquitous. But the idea of kiosks and smartphones and tablets and kind of tablets that are hybrids between tablets and computers and the Surface Tablet, all of those different things have a different context and a different user group. The ability for somebody to walk into a building and use a kiosk with no training, no thought behind it, just be able to walk up to something, touch a few buttons, and you're good to go, it's a totally different thing than having to sort of teach an application and how do you use, how do you use a piece of equipment? You know, which buttons do I click? And I think that one of the big, big things that I'm really interested in is the idea that there are devices, and given the way Apple has rolled things out in Android, if people are comfortable with them, there's almost no training involved in those toolsets. We're rolling out toolsets that are common across all platforms and all software. So a form-based solution is the same whether you're ordering from Amazon or making a request for a work order, the kind of the clicking and the buttons. And everything looks and feels very similar so that it's something that you can get a broader-based comfort level across multiple generations.
You mentioned, you know, Google. One of the things, you know, that they've done with their Material Design Application Framework is make it available for everyone. It's not, you know, just a single toolset, you know, in a single ecosystem. It crosses all the, you know, primary software platforms and hardware platforms, which I think, you know, really supported a lot of that unification and familiarity with, "Oh, I know what to do." You know, maybe ordering something from Amazon versus putting a service ticket, but I know what to do. It's much more intuitive.
We have a question coming in.
We do? Awesome.
We do. From Mr. Reynolds. How does an environment like iOffice Hummingbird, for example, influence our expectations of technology? Ted, I think you're more familiar with iOffice than I am.
Not that deeply. You know, I think if you could expand on that a little bit, I'm not that familiar with Hummingbird, the overall framework of iOffice, absolutely. I think, you know, looking at easy usability is generally the goal, but I'd need a little more specifics, so I'm not that familiar with that specific component. Laura, Jeff?
I'm not familiar with iOffice. However, we are actually in the process of implementing Space IQ, which I believe is a similar product. I think for many FM, we've either inherited or found ourselves trying to innovate our paper-driven and obsolete practices. With technology and connectivity of the 21st century, we have the possibilities to integrate so many different work systems. So Space IQ, for example, allows us the ability to manage our floor plans and our space planning and move management all digitally. And whether I'm at my desk or I'm at home on my laptop, I have access to that. There's a lot of really neat reporting features, a lot of data that you have access to that you didn't when you were using your paper formats or CAD drawings. As far as our expectations of technology, as a YP, I think we expect that technology will be integrated with all functions of facility management. And if they're not, how can they? And also, how can we connect to the different types of technologies?
So how does it feel when you walk into an environment, Laura, where you've got this expectation level and the actual is much different?
Ah, that, yeah, that happened to me. And it's eye-opening. I think for the young generation, they're not, they don't realize how other generations manage facilities. And it's really commendable because we have access to so much technology and data and everything we could possibly need to manage our facilities. So for us, it's different. We walk into a facility and we expect that these softwares and programs and applications will be in place. In a lot of cases, that's not true. And we, as the next generation, come in and try to retrofit and introduce all of the new technology to the facility.
I think probably the, if we go to the next slide, I think that it starts to lead into expectations of service levels. And so I think some people may have heard of the Service Your Way platform that Disney implemented. But the idea is that one of the values that facility management provides is to really cater to the needs of the people that work in an organization so that they're able to be the most healthy and productive that they can be, which, you know, drives the bottom line for the organization. I think one of the, you know, one of the things that we've been really struggling with in FM is how do we get there with limited resources? And so I walk into just about any business, and I've probably got a higher level of expectation around, you know, the thought process and the investment in time and energy. And, you know, you walk into a restaurant and they seat you and then they wait 20 minutes before they come by. And, or you go into a restaurant and you see that there are things that are just in the washrooms or in the fit and finish of the business that say, "I don't ever want to come back to this business." It's got nothing to do with the food or the, you know, even sometimes the customer service, but the actual way and how all that package rolls out isn't inviting. It isn't something that we want to get involved in. And I think that we're struggling to find people in our industry right now and retain. And I think that's across all industries. So if we get into a situation where retention becomes an even bigger issue, that hospitality and Service Your Way for building occupants is going to be a heavy influencer on retention. And I think technology starts to drive that in the absence of people.
Yeah, I would definitely agree. And I think, you know, one of the questions we asked in Chicago was, you know, can we afford this with our current budgets? And then how do we look at, you know, making a good business case that it's not just, you know, a want, it's actually potentially a need to retain top talent? You know, like I gave the example of a small issue in my room in Chicago, and, you know, they were incredibly efficient, you know, did great follow-up, even kind of delivered a couple of bottles of water just to make up for the inconvenience. And I think the reaction from the side in Chicago is, "We can't afford that. You know, we don't have the budget for that." And I think we had some, you know, pretty good dialogue. Well, what could we do to be somewhere in the middle? You know, how can we, you know, provide that great customer experience given the budgets we've got?
I think there's, and beyond that, I think that there's a calculation that might be missing. The cost of turnover is so obscene that if an investment in facilities would help to reduce attrition, maybe we can afford it, or we can afford something in the middle.
Yeah. Laura, any thoughts from your perspective? I mean, you've got, I think, a unique view given that you're working in a nonprofit. How are you seeing that?
Yes. So in my facility, we're in office space, and we're also a nonprofit. So our customers are colleagues. And if it's not our colleagues, then it's our guests, which are grantees and donors. So we have a service-first mentality at all times. We recognize ourselves as a service. Um, we recognize ourselves as a service team, not only to our organization, um, but also to the community. We manage a conference center and other public facilities. I'm sorry, Ted, I might've lost track of that question.
No, I'm no, Jeff, you were right on track in terms of service first in terms of taking care of your colleagues, your donors, your grantees. I mean, uh, um, a good insight.
Yeah, yeah, and your funding is limited.
Yeah. It is, yes. And so we have that tight budget. Um, but we're always looking for innovative ideas and IFMA tends to give us the resources that we need to help us connect with the providers of those resources. And in many cases, if we're, we don't have a budget to take on a full application, we can at least collaborate with other IFMA members, um, and implement best practices.
Excellent. Go ahead, Jeff.
Ted, what, uh, there's, there's, I mean, it really depends on the role, but what would you anticipate the cost of turnover to be, uh, in a, kind of a relationship to the cost of a full-time equivalent?
Um, from looking at a couple of studies, it's, uh, you know, 35% at least. Uh, in some cases, 50%, depending on the study. Uh, so if you lose someone that, you know, the, the brown numbers is, you know, uh, a hundred thousand dollar a year fully loaded resource, your cost to replace is 35 to 50,000 plus the replacement cost of the salary. So that's, that's what I've seen. Have you seen different data?
Yeah, and I think it really depends on the role. I've seen it as low as, uh, 20%, um, and, and as high as, uh, 150%. It really depends on, um, kind of, I think it depends on how you burden it. Uh, if you assume that it's hard to replace a senior role and you end up burdening existing employees and, and run the risk of burning them out, I think it starts to creep the number up higher. Um, but i- if you were to look at it differently and say, well, what are the, what are the accommodation elements of the business that we could do to encourage people that this is the, this is the best place they're ever going to work? Um, you know, you, you spend, let's say you spend 20% of, of what you expect your cost of turnover is going to be and invest that back into the business through the facilities or through accommodations or workplace elements. And I think that you, you should start to reverse flow of, of attrition.
Good thoughts, good thoughts. Um, I think the other factor from a human dynamics perspective that, you know, our process and technology, you know, support is in certain environments. Um, the easier we make it to solve the issue, the problem, whether it's, um, you know, taking care of a too hot, too cold call or, you know, dealing with, you know, anything that's, you know, in a, in a larger facility footprint or if you've got distributed facilities in thousands of locations across the country, what's the speed to resolution, um, impacts the productivity of the organization as well? Uh, if, you know, I'm being distracted by a noisy, um, mechanical unit in the ceiling, I'm, you know, off my game. I'm not, you know, anywhere near a hundred percent, uh, efficient in terms of my workday. Um, I, I think that's the other factor of, um, what the, the tech and the mindset can actually, you know, for the human dynamics.
Certainly. Um, so David had a, uh, comment and I think it probably relates, I'm interpreting it, but I think it probably relates to our next slide. So, um, the idea that data is consumed differently is a really important aspect. Uh, in most cases, um, there's not a lot of value in raw data. Um, an analyst or, or a report needs to be structured to create value out of that data. Uh, I think what we need to understand as an F M is that, yeah, we, to Laura's point earlier, we can actually pull a lot of data and get a lot of measurable, uh, influences on how we do things. But that really does need to be considered in the repackaging to present to top management in the organization. And so that is one of our challenges with technology is we're, we're actually able to get far more data, um, than we can use. And we need to be able to separate the, uh, the noise out. And then we need to refine it to become, uh, the underpinning of a business case or the, uh, the metric that we use for a K P I or, or those types of things. And I believe that's where David was going with the comment. Ted and Laura?
Um, ladies first, ladies first.
Um, yeah, I mean, that's very relevant in our, and it's probably in most organizations. If you're looking for budget considerations and you're not able to present the strategic priority or influence of the project or the application, um, it's likely that you're not going to get the investment from leadership.
Would totally, you know, agree with that. I mean, I think, you know, looking at from the strategic perspective, you know, where we're, uh, how to articulate that we're really nothing without, um, how our people are working in, in teams and across, you know, multiple teams and across multiple geographies. And in many instances, you know, without that, that people-oriented focus to support what we're suggesting from a change perspective, I think it kind of falls on that here is I think there's sufficient, um, backup data, uh, survey data, white paper data to support now. And I'm not sure there really was a, you know, well-defined, um, sense of trending data that, you know, could be utilized to help make that business case and say, hey, wait a minute, we're not just the guys that, you know, doing the water power and air and keeping the space clean. You know, there's a little bit more to it, um, if you really think about it. And I think, you know, our approaches, uh, from the F M perspective have to change, uh, in order to, you know, get effective results and hopefully a little more budget to, uh, you know, give that, uh, kind of world-class service delivery.
Do you think that, um, as these tools become more ubiquitous, um, that they're going to be just an expected, uh, expected element and that there's going to be, uh, you know, you don't think about needing a pen or a pencil? You don't think about having a technology? And from that perspective, i- it becomes foundational value, but not delivering kind of an increased value to the organization?
Sure, absolutely, especially, um, for us Y Ps. Um, you know, you get accustomed to the technology that's in place. It's just a part of your everyday operations and routine. Um, I think, I think that the big challenge for F M's is going to be able to, from the backend, take all the data that you're grabbing and then turning it into metrics that you can then share with leadership and hopefully with the entire organization to show the value that you're adding from a strategic perspective.
I think that's-
One of those things being reducing, reducing risk potentially for errors and omissions or retention or loss of, um, loss of life or whatever it ends up being.
Both things I think are, are spot on. I mean, I think, you know, looking at, you know, some of the, uh, you know, more complex, uh, environments where the people are more readily to invest, um, you know, looking at shopping centers and airports and, um, hub and venues, um, the expectations are pretty darn high these days. Um, you know, and, and it doesn't really matter. Well, you can be in any major airport in the world and function without, you know, any direction whatsoever other than, you know, just keeping an eye out. Um, you know, thinking about, you know, what can we legitimately budget? Um, if we're in a, you know, a hundred thousand square foot office building, uh, it's a, you know, a little harder to quantify, but I think, you know, all the same, um, expectations are kind of there when the people walk in the door because they're used to, um, higher levels of service than other places that they've been during the week or the month.
Um, just watching the time and we're coming up on five minutes remaining. Josh, have we gotten any questions?
No, not other than the ones from David. If you do have any questions, please feel free and type them into the question box. We'll be happy to present them.
Okay. So, um, while we're waiting to see that, we'll kind of roll through the, the next, uh, next slide. And I, we've done entire presentations on just this element, but I think the idea is to really, when you get down to it, we're talking about an element of a solution. So when we, when we did this presentation, uh, in Chicago, uh, the conversation around the room actually was a lot about change management and managing the change that technology would bring with it. Um, mapping the needs of the tool, uh, to the business, uh, from a business case perspective. And then mapping your business process, which in some cases has maybe never been done, comparing it to best practices and understanding what, um, you know, what you're trying to do and making sure that you're actually automated, automating the right process. Um, and then you get into sort of evaluating the tools, uh, looking at the, the medium that the tool is going to deliver through. So is it handheld? Is it tablet? Is it computer? Um, is it purely web-based? Is it client-server based? Uh, and then looking at your implementation str- cycle, trying to understand, uh, you know, how you can get into continuous improvement and really understanding the lifecycle of the technology so that you can budget for technology because it is just like anything else. It has a lifecycle. It does get antiquated and it does need to be replaced. Uh, Laura and Ted?
I think, you know, looking at it from a perspective, uh, we have digital real estate and digital assets we have to manage. Um, you know, did a presentation, you know, from that perspective at Fusion in Los Angeles, uh, a number of years ago. It was kind of a different way of thinking. Uh, but if we, from a operational perspective, look at, hey, you know, we have a physical building envelope. We have all these assets. We have, you know, this particular, you know, set of resources to, uh, maintain the assets and support the, the facility occupants. We, if we, you know, kind of shift our view just a little bit, uh, really what we're talking about from the, the technology side is, you know, the corresponding set of technologies and looking at them as, you know, not much different than a chiller. They, they, you know, need maintenance. They need, um, you know, a, a replacement plan at a certain point in time.
Yeah, I mean, there are, um, there are tools that are out there in the marketplace that are web-enabled, but they are built on very, very old client server, server technology and old database structures. And all of that legacy stuff is threaded through the database. And it makes them inefficient and inflexible to whatever's coming next. Takes a lot of effort to, uh, right those ships.
Um, I'm totally agree. And I think, you know, one of the things we need to ask, you know, whenever we're looking at, uh, you know, acquiring technology for our, our facilities, our operations, our business, is what's the underlying structure look like? Um, you know, do we have, you know, um, a current generation database platform? You know, uh, soft layers in between in terms of communication protocols that are safe? Uh, and not, you know, we get totally hung up on, you know, what you see on the front as you described, Jeff. It's really, you know, what's powering that? Because you might find that, you know, even though it looks great in a browser, what's, what's under the hood is pretty antiquated. Uh, and that will, you know, almost certainly, uh, tell you that if it, if it is older technology, uh, underlying, that you're going to have to plan for, you know, a replacement because it's going to be very difficult to, uh, maintain for the long term.
I, I think, uh, kind of an anecdotal, uh, description of that is I've been to Cuba on vacation a few times because it's something that Canadians have been allowed to do, uh, for years. And, uh, you go and they've got all these, uh, mid-sixties and, and fifties cars that look shiny and new. They look like they've just rolled off the assembly line out of Detroit. And you open the hood and you find a Cold War era, uh, Lada motor and a bunch of Russian tech that, uh, really was never good when it was new. Uh, and it's being used to hold that thing together.
Yeah, good way of putting it, good way of putting it. Um, yeah, just said, you know, we've got a, a complete presentation just on developing a flexible F M, uh, technology strategy. If anyone's interested in that, I think, uh, we posted it to the knowledge library. And I think the, you know, to kind of wrap up, I know we're really at time. Um, you know, looking at, you know, steps to success, you know, we've got a, an equivalent, uh, presentation that we put together, um, on that as well. And I think that's also in the, uh, uh, knowledge library, if I'm correct. Um, because, you know, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot to think about with this stuff. It's not just, you know, can I do a work order? But there are a lot of implications that we should be considering, you know, overall. Um, a couple of wrap-up thoughts. Uh, again, G D P R is coming. Um, and although, uh, you know, it's a, you know, really European Union mandate, uh, right now, it's already affecting what's happening in the rest of the world because there's so many multinationals. They have to comply in one segment of the world. They have to comply everywhere. Um, that is going to affect something as simple as if you accept a, uh, work order ticket through a web interface, how are you treating that data? So this is affecting, you know, how we deal with facility management. Um, it's definitely going to come. You know, looking at, um, you know, some of the things we've talked about today, you know, what, what's the corporate culture of how do we impact that? What, how do we take and, you know, into account our generational differences? Uh, yes, Jeff, you said people still want to pick up the phone? Great, other people don't want to pick up the phone. They just want to use their app on the phone. And, ah, you know, the, uh, level of threat on a daily basis, uh, with, you know, malware, malicious intent, phishing, um, is, is pretty significant. So on the one hand, we've got all these great new web-based tools, but on the other, we really need to think about, uh, you know, the security aspects of what we're doing as well.
Certainly. Well, I think we're at time.
I think we are.
Thank you everyone for attending. Uh, it was great chatting with, uh, Ted and Laura again today. And thank you, Josh, for putting it together and David for organizing.
Great, I thank you all for a, a great presentation. And thank you for celebrating World FM Day with us. Everyone, you have a great day. Bye-bye.
Thanks so much, Brian.